Good evening.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors come to order. At this time, I'd like to see Dr. Pratt.
Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you, and please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, and you may be seated.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone have a conflict of interest? Okay, and then we'll move on to recognitions.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Tonight, we proudly recognize James Little, Scale House operator at the county landfill, as our October 2025 Employee of the Month. Since joining the county in 2001, James has shown dedication, dependability, and a commitment to keeping daily landfill truck operations running smoothly. Congratulations, James, and thank you for outstanding service to your colleagues and the community.
Okay, now we move on to public participation.
Mr. Chair, nobody has signed up. I don't know if anybody in the audience wishes to speak.
Anybody I'd like to speak tonight? Okay, all right, we'll go with the board supervisor's comments. Ms. Emmett?
Thanks for being here. We appreciate you. We appreciate your support.
I'd like to say thank you, and a special thanks to two young ladies who I had a long conversation with today after they decided to come out. I would also encourage that you talk to your friends, your neighbors, your relatives, to support the board members as they journey on their event on November 4th. I must say, we have a very strong board. We have a board that is committed to making things better for Prince Edward County, and I fully support you.
Thank you, ma'am. Everybody's here. Just remember, Halloween coming up, be careful when you're driving. Your booze will run everywhere on the road, so just be careful.
I'd like to acknowledge today the National Day of Remembrance of Mr. Charlie Kirk. This was a young man who believed in freedom, in righteousness, in truth. He believed that liberty isn't self-indulgence, but it's self-governance under God. He's a role model for all of us, and I'd like to posthumously congratulate him for today receiving the Presidential Medal of Freedom. And our prayers go out to his widow, Ms. Erica, and all those affected by his martyrdom.
I'd like to welcome everyone here. Obviously, the whole political violence thing is just the worst thing that we can do in America should be condemned at all times. Thank you for coming and being a part of our community, and we look forward to your contributions.
Good evening, everyone. We thank you for coming. Your presence means much to us, and please get out and vote if you have not already done so on November 4th. Thank you.
Glad to see everyone tonight, too. It's been a beautiful day today. Winter time will be here before long. Jeff is going to be busy at the landfill when the ground gets soft. But again, we're glad to hear from you all, any matter that you have. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to consent for the Jim improvement of minutes from September 9th, 25. Do I get a motion for?
So moved.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins says yes. Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Goode?
Yes.
Okay, and now we have Ms. Chelsea White.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Seku Abduzabour grew up on a small farm in the Green Bay, Virginia area, and as a result, he has always valued hard work, community involvement, and serving the greater good. After proudly serving his country as a United States Marine, Seku began a career as a firefighter, starting first as a volunteer in the Prospect Fire Department in 1998, and shortly thereafter, as a career firefighter with the City of Richmond Fire Department. Seku holds a BA in Emergency Disaster Management, which he utilized during his 27 years of service with the Richmond Fire Department. Seku retired from the City of Richmond as a battalion chief earlier this year, but he remains deeply committed to supporting his community in new ways. On July 26, 2025, Seku and his family opened Five Pillar Meats, combining his agricultural roots, passion for service, and desire to get involved and improve his community. Five Pillar Meats is committed to meeting the growing needs of the region's farming and food industries. Five Pillar Meats is dedicated to providing an avenue for producers to sell their livestock and create a location where families can enjoy quality fresh meat and meat products every day. Now, I would like to welcome Mr. Seku Abduzabour to the podium for this month's Business Spotlight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Chelsea. That's very nice. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board, members of the community. I just wanted to come this evening and share a little bit of information about Five Pillar Meats. We were very excited to open on the 26th of July, after four long years of toil and hard work and dedication, and tears, and blood, and sweat, and all of the above. But we're open now, and we're doing well. I think to take a moment to thank the board and the supporting agencies, Tobacco Commission, the AFID grant, all of the teams that came together to help us make this a success. We're open. We're just behind Lowe's, 250 Dominion Drive. We are open every day except Sundays, thank goodness, because we need to rest. But we, Prince Edward County and central Virginia, we love our meat. I didn't realize that until we opened this place. So just to give you some quick data for those that like data. We've sold almost two and a half tons of meat since we've been open in 80 days. So, and of that number, 64% of it was beef. I can't cut ribeyes fast enough, so it's just an interesting little piece of information. One of the things I wanted to bring to the attention is that, to bring out openly, is that even though we faced a lot of challenges throughout this process, there's some things that I take away from this process that we, up to this point, and I'm sure that I'll learn more as I go. One thing is that I need to be more involved in local government. So I will aspire to either sit in one of these chairs or some other portion of local government, because there's a lot of things that happen that the layperson doesn't know how they're affected by the decisions they make. And so that was a resounding echo in my brain as we went through this process. Another thing is that you really get an appreciation for both sides of the coin. We cater to producers and farmers to bring your livestock. We also cater to consumers who like to have some meat or meat products that we offer. And so both sides of that coin give us a chance to link those two communities together that may not ordinarily have had an opportunity to meet each other, right? So farmers can come in the back door, consumers can come in the front, and say, "Hey, you're my neighbor." "I sure am." "Is this your meat we're eating?" "Yes, this is our beef," or "This is our pork," or "Our lamb," or whatever the case may be. So that's a very exciting threshold to be in as we able to launch this project. I want to say thank you again for all your support, and please continue to come out and support us. If anybody has any questions, I'm there every day, so feel free to stop by. Give us a call. Our phone number is Cut Meat, C-U-T-M-E-A-T. Doesn't get any easier than that. Thank you again for your time. I appreciate you all. Have a good night.
Okay, and then we have Mr. Jeff Jones with the solid waste update.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Good evening.
As you can see in the packet, we had a the board's review for a proposal from LaBella and Associates to assist the county with a major upcoming amendment to update the county's solid waste plan. It is due in submission to Virginia DEQ in 2027. Currently, the county is in a solid waste planning unit with Cumberland. Because there is no operational relationship with a solid waste between the two counties and a new landfill being constructed in Cumberland, we recommend that Prince Edward County withdraw from the current regional planning unit and develop and submit a solid waste plan of our own. The Solid Waste Management Plan mandate requires all solid waste planning units, localities, consider address all contents as following. Such reduction, refuse, recycle, recycle recovery, incineration of landfill in each plan must meet the requirements established by solid waste planning and requirements, recycling requirements, to include an approved solid waste management plan meeting the mandatory recycl rate, of which is 15% for Prince Edward County. This budgeted item is in a solid waste budget with a dollar amount of $45,000. Requires board approval for the county procurement process. So what we really want to do is just separate ourselves from Cumberland and have our own, because they don't bring us any trash. We don't work with them. We know it's really no need to continue in a relationship. And with the new landfill being built in Cumberland, it's just time for us to have our own plan, our own setup, instead of being along with them.
Will separating from Cumberland be more expensive, less expensive, or net zero for us?
Well, Sarah can probably answer that better than I can.
So we haven't had any conversation with them about the update. So I don't know what their plan is, you know, for their own update. It's really more about the relationship and being able to explain to DEQ why we're in this planning unit. So conceivably, it could be more expensive, because we wouldn't be sharing the costs. But I think in the long run, focusing the plan just on the needs of the citizens of Prince Edward County and not including the needs of what could become a competitor, happily. Because with their new landfill, in fact, you know, we could be competing regarding customers and rates. And so, you know, I think we went back and researched it and could find no kind of specific reason why the two localities decided to work together to get with. I think it was one of those, hey, is anybody doing this plan? Oh, yeah, I am, I am, you know, and I mean, I, we just, there was no conversation or reaction about why it made sense. So over the years, we've stayed together, but now specifically with the development of the new landfill, I think there's really a common reason why Prince Edward County needs to make sure that we're taking care of the needs of Prince Edward County citizens.
I think the other thing is that when they're having discussions on their new landfill, we get pulled into that conversation, because they're part of our planning unit. So I think it makes sense. You know, my guess is it was a marriage of convenience. You had two localities that were able to partner together. The town of Farmville lies in both counties. Maybe it made sense from a cost perspective to hire the consultant to plan for both localities. But again, as Sarah iterated, I think it's probably time for us to go off on our own and get that separate approval.
I got a question. I know what you're talking about. Okay, I agree with the separation. What was their share prior to me requesting this separation in a dollar amount?
I'm going to tell you Supervisor Townsend, and I'll have an answer for that, because we haven't had to do an engineering. We had to do a minor update because of the proposed, I think the prior proposed landfill, the county of Prince Edward had to participate in an update of our plan. Now, that landfill, it was, I don't know, trapped or mothballed, the first landfill that was proposed in Cumberland. And before that, I think it was back in the 1990s when this originated, and then there's a five-year update, so we didn't go back and look at what the engineering costs were. But I know we had to do one fairly recently, and it had to do with amendments required by Cumberland.
I'm just curious, dollar amount?
If we were talking about the water supply plan and the anticipated cost of that, it would probably be a different conversation, because that is a huge plan, a costly plan, and we are working through the CRC regionally on that.
And that's going to be a six-figure cost to it?
Yeah, that's a huge.
I think it makes sense to separate, you know, I think it makes sense.
It really does, because if that new landfill is construction and built.
It just makes sense.
We are going to, I'm just going to say, I tell you, we are going to be a competitor, because middle of Buckingham has nowhere to go, and it may be one, two miles closer for them to go there than it is to come to me. So we're going to have to compete to keep, you know, to keep growing the landfill as I anticipate and I want to do, we're going to have to be a competitor. You know, we've grown a lot since I've been here, and I want to see it keep growing, so.
And we're getting all the Buckingham business now, right?
Yes, sir.
And I will say, this is not an adversarial withdrawal, and there's nothing adversarial. It's just a procedural. Everybody has to do the same thing, so it's kind of a structural.
I moved.
Sorry, go ahead.
I moved the board accept and approve the proposal from LaBella for the completion of the county's solid waste management plan, and I moved that the board of supervisors direct the county administrator to file an application with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality with notification of the county's intent to withdraw from our existing solid waste planning unit and our intent to submit a new solid waste management plan for Prince Edward County.
A second, ma'am. Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
And Supervisor Goode?
Yes.
And Jenkins says yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm also asking the direction, for the board to give me the direction to do, the direction to do what with the 60-plus logs that we put out for sealed bid at the Prince Edward County landfill that came from the Worsham Convenience Site construction project. We put the logs out to bid, sealed bid, they were out for 30 days, and nobody bid on them. We had not have any, they were supposed to call me to come look at them, to see the logs. Nobody bid on them. And I'm just asking with the board's direction, what would you like me to do with them at this point?
Take them and sell them.
Take them. You want me to take them and, I don't know if they laid there long enough and got too dried out. I mean, I can, if you want, I can load a load and see what they bring and see if it's worth doing, or.
It makes sense to me. You just sell them.
The contractor tried to sell them. Couldn't find a buyer, and that's why they ended up at the landfill previously.
There's two different places that will buy them that could not bid on them. One of them is an Amish sawmill, and they cannot, they do not carry $2 million worth of insurance, which is what was required by the which is what was required by the, that, and they don't have workman's comp because they're not required to because they're self-employed.
Right.
So therefore they could not bid on them, but both of them would buy them.
So I load them and carry them over there. They will buy.
Or they will, they possibly would even send their person if we would just load them. They have, they have their own trucks, but.
Yeah, because I don't have anything that's got standards on it. I'd have to put something, make standards on the trailer, but, I mean, that's, that's why I'm asking, what is your direction on them now, you know, for me to do with them?
With the board, and I think that we had a motion last time, actually, let, give me just about a week to find out how they can move them or whatever else, and I'll touch base with you and, and let Doug know or whatever else, but.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll, if, if, if they're gone between now and next meeting, if not, we'll bring it back up, but I'll, I'll, I'll see both of them this week.
Okay.
What do you have there to load them with?
I can load them with skids there with forks.
Back of the seat, so you don't, everybody else can with that.
They pine, they pine logs anywhere between eight inches, 20 inches in diameter, that's a couple oak logs in there. They'll burn 20, 22 inches in diameter. They cut anywhere from 10 foot two to 11 foot three, just whatever, 14, some of them 14 foot, whatever fit on a dump truck with the doors shut. Um, some of them may be 16 foot. They're not cut to grade length already, so whoever gets them would have to do that. But I can load them with a skid steer if they bring, bring something with standards on it, you know. I don't have anything to pick them up and load them over in a dump truck with, but I can use forklift and load them by forklift here. With a skid steer, that won't be a problem.
Trailer, the standards would be too tall for you to get over.
Yes, sir. Yep. I expect David, what you're talking about, they probably just gonna bring a two-ton with, with standards on it, which I could load, yeah.
Correct.
That won't be an issue.
That or a flat bed with just short standard or something.
Yeah.
Might send, might send a 40-foot flat bed and they're able to standard.
Yeah, as long as I ain't gotta go too high. A 40-foot flat bed will work, yeah.
Thank you.
I got, uh, one more thing too. Um, the, uh, let's see, item number 20? In your table packet?
Page 243.
Is a, um, new Marathon RJ350, uh, compactor for the Worsham Convenience Center. Um, the one we have now is 25-plus years old. It's rusted all can be. I'm sure y'all have seen it. If you've been in Worsham, it leaks a lot. It's just, it's more than 25 years old. So I got some prices. The source well price for the, for everything we need, controls, the machine, the power system and everything, is $35,348.10. The actual retail price is $44,928. So we're saving almost $10,000 by going through state contract on the source well price. Um, I can have this before we open the new Worsham site. I know they are ahead of schedule. They're doing a very good job. It looks really good and they are ahead of schedule. So I'm asking the board to approve the, um, $35,348.10 for the new compactor at the Worsham Convenience Site.
What you gonna do with the old ones?
We have been keeping the old ones, using them for spare parts of what we have in existing sites such as Green Bay, Verso, Donaldton Heights, uh, Tuggle, because some of the parts are getting obsolete. We aren't able to get them, so me and Randy have been kind of robbing one to keep others going for right now. Because that's kind of the plan is as we rebuild a site to put a new compactor in. So what we, what we're keeping, we're just taking parts off of to repair our old ones. Because the old ones were built, some of them were built in 1995, some were built in 1998. But so they're, they're more than 25 years old, so they, they've had their lifespan. And I do have the money already in the refuse budget to cover that.
So moved.
One second. Supervisor Hill?
I mean, yes.
Supervisor Townsley?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins is yes. Supervisor Goode?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all. I'd like to thank y'all for supporting me too with the solid waste. We, we work hard, we stay busy and y'all support me a lot and I really appreciate it. Yep, thank y'all.
And we have Mr. Love?
Actually, Chelsea's up.
Oh, Chelsea.
Chelsea's.
I thought, skip over Chelsea. There you go, Chelsea.
Hello again. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here tonight. On page 47 of your packets, you'll find my monthly report for my department from which I provide a summary. And that's also the handout that I provided at the beginning of the meeting. So firstly, the newly adopted Strategic Economic Development Plan was presented at the September Chamber of Commerce luncheon. This provided us a great opportunity to educate and engage with the public as well as open the door for collaboration. We will be working with the IDA on the implementation phase of this plan this fall. We recently met with the Tobacco Commission for a site visit at Five Pillar Meats. During this meeting, we toured the facility, discussed the development of the site and the new equipment upgrades. This type of visit is customary for projects that receive Tobacco Commission grants and it went very well. The Five Pillar Meats ribbon cutting event also went very well and it provided a great opportunity to host local and state dignitaries and receive positive press coverage for the county. Thank you for your support at this event. I recently attended the first Virginia's Heartland Regional Economic Development Alliance meeting, or Verita for short. And this was the Local Economic Development Organization kickoff and it was held at the Seed Innovation Hub. These meetings will be held monthly going forward and I am looking forward to working on local and regional development opportunities that will benefit the county. The Industrial Development Authority received or recently provided an equipment loan to Paraceramics America for $170,000 to purchase a water jet saw. Obtaining this equipment will allow the company to hire, to hire two additional employees. Currently, there are 30 employees at the Farmville location. The next IDA meeting is scheduled for next Friday, October 28th, or sorry, 24th at 8:00 AM. I recently submitted the final report for the VEDP Fiscal Year 22 Grant that was awarded to fund the Hip Park Offsite Utilities Engineering Design. And since then, the final reimbursement payment for this grant has been received in the amount of $93,000. So we're happy to close that out and get that reimbursement in. Regarding tourism, we recently attended the Tobacco Commission September Board Meeting at the Virginia International, International Raceway in Halifax. I'm pleased to announce that the county was awarded a $74,800 grant to support Phase 2 of the Comprehensive Wayfinding Signage Program, which focuses on the fabrication and installation of eight vehicular trailblazer signs. The next state, step in this project is getting it out to bid. The VA250 Mobile Museum Experience was a great success with 422 visitors over two days. The paid advertised, sorry, the paid advertising to promote this event drove almost 4,000 people to the Things to Do in the Fall in Prince Edward County webpage, which is an extension of the www dot exploreprinceedward dot com website. Those ads obtained 291,120 impressions and 2,613 link clicks. Staff is currently working on another VTC slash VA250 grant application for up to $10,000 to promote historical tourism assets in Prince Edward County. The next Prince Edward County Tourism Council, or P E C T C for short, meeting is scheduled for tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM in the Visitor Center. The council will discuss current projects and new tourism promotional, tourism promotion initiatives. Thank you again for your time and your support and I will try to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't know whether this would be Chelsea or maybe the administrator's office or LinkedIn page is my question.
Yes, we don't have a LinkedIn currently.
So, I don't know. Who would, because, because I see you're doing social media on some things and that might just be the, the Visitor Center specifically.
Yes, it is.
So maybe that's more of a administrator's office thing, just something that. It's a social media.
I was gonna say, what are we, what are we talking about?
Yeah.
If you need me, call me. Y'all got my phone number.
Professional networking site that's probably worth, you know, 20 minutes to claim. I just claimed it for Farmville sale.
Just to have it in case we need it.
Just to have it. Anyone who you're trying to hire for any kind of office work is on LinkedIn. There, that's, that's a way that they check up on us and see what kind of work environment we are, so probably worth investing in.
Chip, can you have a class like that for us old folks? Just checking.
Thank you.
Sell tickets.
If Dave comes to that class, I want to come too. Just to see you on that.
Bring my flip phone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, our public hearing tonight is consideration of a special use permit filed by Arcola Towers. County received this application, uh, request by Jonathan Yates, who's here with us tonight, for special use permit to construct 197-foot self-supporting communications tower on land denoted as tax map parcel 023B-2-2, located at 85 SMI Way, Farmville, Virginia. This is 10th of a mile from his intersection with Industrial Park Road. This parcel is zoned I, I-1 industrial and this use requires special use permit. This public hearing was properly advertised in the Farmville Herald and the October 1st and October 8th additions, uh, list of property owners and also a letter was sent to the town of Farmville, since this was within a one-mile proximity of the town. Uh, I've had no comments from the town or the public for or against this application since it's been advertised. The Planning Commission held their advisory public hearing on August 19th where no one spoke in opposition and the commission unanimously recommended approval. Um, I've placed this, 11 conditions, uh, as, uh, item six in your packet. Any of those, of course, you could change, uh, as you wish. The applicant has had a copy of those in consents and I'd be glad to answer anything I might have. The application that has photo simulations of what the site will look like at full build-out. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir. You know, we have any questions?
I think the, this is a Verizon, is the anchor tenant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Verizon is the anchor tenant.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Jonathan Yates, Arcola Towers, um, sorry. Let me get the microphone right. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, we just really want to thank Mr. Love. Uh, he has been incredible throughout this process, getting us here tonight. We also want to thank Jim Alesworth. Uh, he has provided the property in question. It is exactly where Verizon needs to be to improve their coverage. This is one of those cases where everything comes together. Jim, this is a piece of property he bought in 2009 from Henry Booth. Mr. Booth had used the property to store, uh, construction materials and vehicles for his construction business. Jim has been using it, uh, the building on the property to store inventory for key office supply, his business. So we have a 4.7-acre property zoned in general industrial. We're able to easily meet all the setbacks and what we're proposing is 197-foot, what we call a self-support tower, designed initially for Verizon Wireless, but also spaced for three additional broadband carriers. I'm here for any and all questions the chair or the board of supervisors may have. Thank you all.
Does this agreement include access for Prince Edward County for any potential emergency, um, first responder? Trey, you know what I'm trying to ask. What am I trying to ask?
Colocation.
If it can be useful. Yeah, go ahead, Trey.
We, we can't require it. They can proffer it. It's not, it's not a current site that we need. Doesn't mean somewhere down the road, right, Trey, that something couldn't change.
Long as we're with Dominion, we should have coverage in this area.
Back, back to that, back to that question. Is the, is Arcola, are they the least bit interested in extending that to us? I thought that I had read it somewhere and I'm, I'm going blank right this moment.
Arcola always works with, um, county emergency management as, as long as it has structural capacity and those kind of needs. But we all, we will work with Trey.
We have a motion.
We need to open public hearings, okay?
Public here?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has signed up to speak this evening. I don't know what anybody in the audience wishes to speak or not.
Hello? Anybody on the phone?
Nobody wishes to speak? Can close the thing?
Supervisor Goode?
We need a.
We gotta get a motion.
We gotta get a motion.
Okay.
I moved the board approved the request for special use permit for Jonathan Yates for Arcola Tower to construct 197-foot self-supporting towers with the following conditions as listed.
I'll second that.
Okay. Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsley?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins is yes. Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Goode?
Yes.
Okay.
Before, before we pass on, I knew that I'd read that number 11 does, does do that. Local, local government access owners of towers shall provide the county. So it, so it is in there. I knew that I'd read that. I can accept and acknowledge this provision, so that, it is, it is in there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I read that somewhere.
It's not awkward if you don't want to stick around for, for what I, for what we're doing, y'all.
We completely understand.
Jim and I are going to sneak out if that's all.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Um, item number 13 is Highway Matters. I believe Scott Frederick is in Cumberland County, so I'd be happy to record any maintenance issues and pass those along.
Sir, just, just one quick thing to kind of clear up some, evidently some misinformation that's going around. The Board of Supervisors does not have the authority over roads. There, there's some information going around that supervisors are not doing their part in keeping roads and things up. It is, it is only our ability to ask the state to do so-and-so or to bring it to their attention. We certainly do not have that authority. So anyone that, that comes to you and says, why, why is the board not doing so-and-so? Make sure that you say, we, we try to pass that on, but we, we simply don't have the authority. The state does not give it to us. Just for the public to realize that they certainly should call us so that we can bring it. But we have no right whatsoever to make sure it's done because it's not within our purview. With that said, they're, they're working on some dead trees. If anyone has any in, in your right of ways in your district, I know that they contacted me and I rode around with them last week and showed them seven and they did start cutting them. If you have any dead trees, whether it's in your district or if you know of one in someone else's, please, please let them know.
I think the biggest complaint right now is mowing and, um, you got Johnson grass that's four and five feet tall, some places on the side of the road. But I know they are, um, it's the second mowing of the year. I know by October 15th, they'll also be mowing on primaries, so hopefully we'll see a lot of progress over the next two or three weeks. Between now and snowfall, that's, that's all they should be working on, hopefully cutting a few dead trees too.
I would like to mention that I drove through Junction Canal the other day. They really did a nice job fixing that road. A little bit more to get down to the bell, but I hope.
Doug, are you referring to secondary or primary?
Secondary.
They've already cut the secondary. They'll start primary and finish the last.
So I have a question and I think about this before, but, but it, it, it looks so disgusting. Dr. Stempert and I have met about the Rendabout area and, and how Hampton Sydney can really enhance that area. Who is responsible by actually cutting that grass in the Rendabout area? Because it's disgusting.
It's Savida right of way.
That's what I thought.
Yes, ma'am.
That needs to be cut badly.
And, and Dr. Pratt, I had a. And, and Dr. Pratt, I had a meeting with Mr. Copeland, his replacement, last week, and I got word through them from Dr. Stempert, Hampton City is not interested in maintaining the roundabout, unfortunately. So we'll continue to evaluate some options. It, it would be great in the long term if we could maybe find a grant, get that thing landscaped and looking the way it should, and if, if your Board's okay with me trying to find that, I'd be happy to do that. But it, I agree with you 100%. It, it's an entryway into campus and.
I'm surprised they're not interested in that. Can we offer them the ability to do branding or paint?
Already have. I'll share. Even a tiger statue, offered all that.
Yeah, we've tried to partner on outdoor art. It was tiger-centric, and.
And they turned it down.
You know, I've never seen a roundabout that has been landscaped. There may be some.
There's Concord, yeah, Concord.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Because when it was bought to my attention, I went to Concord, and it's beautiful.
You know, like sculptures or, you know, whatever, in various counties and cities and towns across Virginia also.
So I'm not, even though they passed, I'm not ready to give up yet, so we'll keep, we'll keep trucking.
We did think that the tiger was a great idea.
Yeah, but for right now, to get that grass cut, because it is terrible.
We'll have Sarah pass along.
Job.
Yes, ma'am.
It needs to be done badly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item number 14 is citizen volunteer appointments.
Yes, ma'am.
So I will call your attention to item number 21 on page 249 in your table pack. So we currently have a vacancy due to resignation on the local Board of Building Code Appeals. The applicant that, whose citizen volunteer application is enclosed in your table pack is a qualified applicant. So we would ask the Board to consider.
249.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, 249. And then we have positions on the Planning Commission on the Board of zoning appeals where the current office holders, their terms expire, so even though they are eligible and may wish to seek reappointment, we advertise all of the positions so that everyone has the opportunity. So you have one appointment and then to authorize advertising the citizen positions that you will appoint at the December meeting.
Do we need a motion for John in this meeting?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of John Arvost for the local building, Board and Building Code Appeals. Second. Okay. Two by the Emmett? Yes. To the Towns? Yes. To the Jones?
Yes.
Jinkins is yes. To the body go.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. And now we got Ms. Crystal Baker.
On page 174, the proposed FY27 budget schedule, which has been coordinated with the school schedule, and the FY27 budget request forms are attached. The Board is asked to approve the FY27 budget schedule and request forms as proposed.
Second.
Okay, that motion's okay. Two by the Emmett? Yes. Towns? Yes. To the Jones?
Yes.
Jinkins is yes. To the body go.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Towns? Yes. To the Jones?
Yes.
Jinkins is yes. To the body go.
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. And now we got Ms. Crystal Baker.
On page 174, the proposed FY27 budget schedule, which has been coordinated with the school schedule, and the FY27 budget request forms are attached. The Board is asked to approve the FY27 budget schedule and request forms as proposed.
Second.
Okay, that motion's okay. Two by the Emmett? Yes. Towns? Yes. To the Jones?
Yes.
Jinkins is yes. To the body go.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Towns? Yes. To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Jones?
Yes.
To the Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
To the body go.
Yes.
Would it be okay if I do item number 23 while I'm here?
Yes.
Thank you. So we received invoices from Terry for May, which are outside the approval period for the county administrator, and as we talked about last month, for the county attorney's contract, invoices not submitted within 120 days after services are rendered will not be paid. And then we ask you to consider whether payments should be made based on the intent of the contract for the county attorney to provide timely invoices per the contract, and then we also received invoices for June and July, and we're asking you to approve those payments for June and July invoices.
So the total is 39.50? What's the total?
So the.
39.50, 3200, and.
14.50.
14.50. 76.
So moved.
I was talking. Just before we take, just before we take a vote, we realize she's not here to tell us what, what's what. Are we going to be in legal problems with not following our?
I think you have the ability to waive that contract. You did that a couple months ago. I think, you know, I'll speak for staff. The main thing, we want to get called up within a few months. We don't want to be in a position where we were a year and a years on the billing. I think the contract language allows us to keep our foot to the pedal to get the invoices. I know you are going to be doing our evaluation next month. That'll give you all opportunity to discuss further.
My problem is the contract, according to this, and I, and I quote, invoices not submitted within 120 days after services are rendered will not be paid. That's what the contract says, and if I'm not mistaken, I specifically said to her at the last one, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire. It has, it's been, a motion has been properly made in second, but my vote is a no, simply because I think that, I think that our contract needs to be, needs to be held. Yeah, I mean, you're still holding it. We just pass it on because she knows, you know. But it has been properly made in second, so. Okay. To the body go.
I would say if we do it, it should be a letter included that this is the last time because it is in the contract.
Okay. Dr. Pratt?
And, and I agree with what Lou said.
Yeah, I, I vote yes with that stipulation. This is your, this is your, your one time. I mean, because David is perfectly right, it was spelled out, was clear as day, you know, we, we want to encourage rather than discourage, but this has got to be it on that.
With a copy of the contract.
Yeah.
To the Jones?
With the spirit of the previous comments, I'm not voting no.
Okay. Jinkins said yes?
I'm going to agree with that stipulation that this is the final time that it will happen. There will be no other discussion about it. She doesn't bill us on time, she does not get paid on it.
Okay.
She won't get it.
Yes, with the stipulations, okay. And I'm going to, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, just a few items reported on this evening. One, our county YouTube channel has been changed to @PrinceEdward1754. That's to differentiate ourselves from Prince Edward Island, Canada. Land use taxation, for those of you that are in the land use program, the Commissioner of Revenue will be using the state land evaluation advisory council or SLEAC values this year. SLEAC values are developed through Virginia Tech. This year, we will see agricultural properties in the program drop from $700 per acre in value to $400 per acre in value. So a lot of our farmers that are in the program will see their land values drop. Landfill, county staff have implemented the new software program at the landfill on October 1st to collect tipping fees via credit card from customers who do not have a, an established pre-approved credit application. This will allow us to cut down on lost revenue from tipping fees. If you remember, a couple years ago, we had to wipe about $40,000 in, in bad debt. This will resolve, significantly resolve that problem. E911 dispatch effective October 1, the dispatch center, Farmville Prince Edward Emergency Communications Center was officially consolidated and functioning under authority of the county. The town manager, myself, we are supervised with the assistance of the advisory board. Congratulations to our own Trey Powell, who is the chairman of that advisory board, and I want to thank Trey for all his help. If you know, this took the last three years. We've been working on trying to make this happen, and we went and, we went to Harrisonburg and visited, and I also want to thank the sheriff. The sheriff worked with us hand-in-hand to make this happen, and I know it's, he's, he's given up something to, for this to happen, but I think we're all in it for better service for the citizens of Prince Edward County, so thank you. We also learned last week that our new communications center received a $900,000 state grant that will go towards upgrading and expanding the dispatch center. Basically, it's going to flip across the hall to the EOC, and congratulations to Crystal Barton and Trey for working on that grant application. Emergency radio system, we've received word that Dominion has approved the use of the tower at Millwood and Third Street for use by the county. We're now working on lease agreements for all three sites, Dominion, Lee Mountain, and Verizon, and hope to have those wrapped up either late this fall or this winter, so we can move forward next year with the implementation of our new radio system. Rural rustic projects, VDOT has wrapped up the Rice Creek and Junction Canal projects and maybe Quail Cross, and I haven't been out there in the last five or six days, but the rest of them are completed, and as Lou said, it, it looked pretty good, pretty good. Worship and Convenience Site, contractor has finished placing fill, and they're pouring retaining walls and, and compactor pads, and, and the project remains on budget and on schedule. Assistance to firefighters, we've actually, it's on the agenda, item 22, we received news that we received a grant in the amount of $135,069.73 to purchase our new SCBA mobile air trailer for our volunteer fire departments. That was the second-ranked project in our 2527 CIP. We previously received a $15,000 grant from the Office of Fire Program, so those two funding sources will allow us to proceed with ordering the trailer. Route 15 Bridge, VDOT has restricted traffic on 15 near county line to a one lane due to the large pothole and exposed rebar until further notice, and we actually, I had a meeting last week with VDOT, look at bigger issues, but I'm hopeful they can expedite the new bridge. They're going to build a replacement bridge in that location. They're going to build a temporary bridge to the east, and I'm, my hope is they could speed up, at least maybe speed up the process and get that temporary bridge in place because I'm not sure this existing bridge is going to last that long, and I'm hoping they don't have to wait restrict it because that will force larger, like, logging trucks and, and concrete trucks and gravel trucks to go around, which means either using the backroads like Maher and Green Bay or maybe through 6460, which, the backroads are not a, a good option because of local traffic. So that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Any questions? Doug wants, he has one question. On, on our billing at the landfill, if I read that correctly, it's credit card or check only?
Credit card or if you have a credit account. See, they can fill out the paperwork and have an account set up with us, a formal account. I assume you tie your banks, your bank account to it. Cheryl's in there, and she'll come in out.
It's only credit card.
It's only credit card.
You can continue to dunk at the landfill, but pay here next month.
So I could have an, my business could have an account, and I could get my invoice once a month and pay my bill once a month, just like, kind of like normal.
Well, it's very normal.
That's legal tender for all debts. All, get it right on.
We did want to, you know.
Public, public and private. Public and, I, I understand, but we legally, that's good anywhere in the United States by state law and, and federal law.
But you could pay that at the courthouse, right?
But you can't, you can't dunk there and.
You have to have a credit, credit account set up with us.
Got a question.
And you could bring and pay cash. and as Lou said, it looked pretty good, pretty good. Worship and Convenience Site Contractor has finished placing fill and they're pouring retaining walls and compactor pads, and the project remains on budget and on schedule. Assistance to firefighters, we've actually, it's on the agenda, item 22, we received news that we received a grant in the amount of $135,069.73 to purchase our new SCBA mobile air trailer for our volunteer fire departments. That was the second ranked project in our 25, 27 CIP. We previously received a $15,000 grant from the Office of Fire Program, so those two funding sources will allow us to proceed with ordering the trailer. Route 15 Bridge, VDOT has restricted traffic on 15 near county line to a one lane due to the large pothole and exposed rebar until further notice. And we actually, I had a meeting last week with VDOT, look at bigger issues, but I'm hopeful they can expedite the new bridge. They're going to build a replacement bridge in that location. They're going to have to build a temporary bridge to the east, and I'm, my hope is they could speed up, at least maybe speed up the process and get that temporary bridge in place because I'm not sure this existing bridge is going to last that long, and I'm hoping they don't have to weight restrict it because that will force larger, like logging trucks and concrete trucks and gravel trucks to go around, which means either using the backroads like Maher and Green Bay or maybe 36460, which, the backroads are not a good option because of local traffic. So that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Any questions?
Doug, one, yes, one question. On our billing at the landfill, if I read that correctly, it's credit card or check only?
Credit card or if you have a credit account. They can fill out paperwork and have an account set up with us, a formal account. I assume you tie your banks, your bank account to it. Cheryl's in there and she'll come in out.
So it's only credit card? It's only credit card? The landfill? I understand, basically, but you can continue to dump the landfill, but pay here, next month.
So I could have an, my business could have an account and I could get my invoice once a month and pay my bill once a month, just like, kind of like normal.
Well, it's very normal.
That's legal tender for all debts. All. Right on. Public, public and private. Public and, I understand, but we legally, that's good anywhere in the United States by state law and federal law.
But you could pay that at the courthouse, right? You could use, you could cash.
But you can't, you can't dump there and...
You have to have a charge.
You have to have a credit, credit account set up with us.
Got a question.
And you could bring, pay cash.
So it comes here and puts some money down, like if they bring the currency here, it's I want to put $1,000 on my dumping fee, and y'all just take it off, right? So we could take the money if they come here.
You have to have a credit application with us.
Okay, if they come here and do all that, they put the money here up front, okay? All right.
Problem that you run into is if I hire somebody to haul stuff, they take a load down there and can't dump because they don't have a credit card or whatever else, then they back up on my property because it's right beside it and dump it. And if you don't believe it, come with me and I'll show you.
They dump on me too, so, I mean, I'm involved with you.
I understand, but what I, I'm just saying legally.
Yeah. Yeah, legally.
I don't, I don't know that we cannot accept cash because it is a federal, says, it says on every one of those, well, it's a five, 10, 20, 100, whatever, that it's, it says right there, legal for all.
My industry cannot take cash.
Cheryl, may I ask, what brought about the change to the use of the credit card?
I understand completely where the problem, the problem is, is that you're going to have people that show up that either don't have a credit card or have not, they're going to dump it somewhere where, I mean, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, we've got to come up with something else because it's going to be dumped somewhere when they leave that landfill.
You know, paying with cash has got to be a written receipt, the date, the amount, and that driver's got to have a copy, and a copy's got to come to the courthouse with the money because that driver's going to turn that receipt in to whoever he works for, and that's part of their business.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't, we haven't, we've solved one issue, but we've created another one.
Yeah. I don't think we can turn money down, but it's got to be...
I don't, I don't know how to...
We have not had the issue yet.
Okay.
Since it's been up in our, we have not had an issue with anybody being turned back, and we have not been willing to pay for a credit card or a credit application.
Yeah, they fill out the credit applications, they're good, and they can come pay cash or, you know. I mean, the main thing is, and we can start, we can ask legal counsel, we can ask, get you that answer, Supervisor Emmer. But I, I know other landfills, they handle things the same way because they don't want the folks that are working the scales to be handling...
I understand, I understand the reasoning completely. I understand that, but it doesn't absolve us from legality. If, if legal counsel says it's all right, so be it, but if people, I mean, if you, if you want to drive to 473 Oliver Road tonight, I'll guarantee you it'll be 15 bags of trash there after they close the landfill.
And that, that stuff usually probably, because they could have taken that to Tuggle or Prospect or one of the other ones, usually the problem we're running is they, they bring that truckload of building debris and they say, "I'm hauling this for David Emmer," and then David Emmer's like, "I didn't authorize them."
I understand, I understand where we're coming from.
Yeah. We'll get you an answer.
Back to the man in the scale house, it's got to be his responsibility to receive it, to write it up, put it in a bag, and it's got to come to the courthouse where the Jeff brings it, and somebody does the math. Yes, sir.
It's got to be audited each time they bring that receipt, that bag.
Every time they come down.
It's a, it's a problem. I'm not saying it's not a problem, we just... Get you an answer, please. Thank you.
Okay. And now we go on number 22.
Already been done.
Well, actually, we got to take the vote.
I guess we need a vote.
Trey?
I don't, I don't know what number I am. You're 22. You're... Hey, I'm here. Last but not least. I won't read the whole summary because Doug pretty much already talked about a lot of it, but yeah, we, so the board approved the 2025-2027 capital improvement project plan back in March, and the SCBA air trailer was on there. I tell you right now, this is a desired need. Lou, Lou can tell you, the truck is currently at Dalton Heights and it is out of service, it is irreparable and will not come back to life. Been that way for two or three months now, I believe. So the air trailer was on the CIP, it was approved, had a rough estimate of about $150,000. Started actively looking for a grant to try to help offset some of that cost. We were successful in two, which was fortunate for us. The total cost of the project is $157,679.23. Of that, we have a grant match on the FEMA side of $6,753.49 and additional county funds of $1,856.11, equals the full total. We'll buy this off of state contract on the Virginia Sheriff's Association's contract bid, and just looking for y'all's approval to go ahead and place this order so we can start getting our funds back.
So moved.
Second.
Should we vote Jones?
Yes.
Town?
Yes.
Yes.
Jinkes is yes. Should we vote Jones?
Yes.
Should we vote Watson?
Yes.
Doc Pratt?
Yes.
Should we vote him? I mean, Gil?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great job with the grant.
Thank them.
Well done. Sure.
Okay. Any other business we have tonight?
Just the, you've got the reports and department reports are in your packet, if there are any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recess until Thursday, November 6.
At 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. Okay. All right. Thank you all for coming.
Closed session, not tonight. Nope. You'll have that next month.
Second.
Yes.
Should I town?